My father is Richard Johnson and Chuck Cott, also another alternate. And to my immediate left is Susan Eyre, our new recording secretary for the zoning board. Tammy has retired after town collective tax duties are overwhelming over these days. We have just a couple of board business items. That's the approval of the minutes from December. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll move. We accept the minutes for December as written with one exception, and that is that after the last sentence where it says Mr. Greenbaum may have a motion to continue, Mr. Cottin seconded it, and it ends there, and it should say P U N A or a vote was taken by all three of the members. It should indicate that vote.
The vote, right.
So.
We might have to go back to Tammy on that one.
Yeah.
I mean, unless you remember what it was, I'd...
Well, I think we can say that...
Oh, that it adjourned?
No.
We don't need a motion to adjourn.
No, 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 the P U N A, the motion to grant the...
The continuance.
Continuance.
Oh.
It doesn't say that we voted on it, and we did. We said, you know, all favor I, so we can just write P U N A for pass.
You need an amendment.
Absolutely no extensions, yeah. Because that's not a quote, but it's what happened.
A second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any further corrections? Those in favor of the minutes as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Or say no. extensions, one extension, two. Two. Okay. We have to wait a few, two and a half minutes, but Mr. Reed and Ben Kewen may come forward and get set up for our first hearing this evening. You might want to hold the microphone closer to you. I have to wait till 7:05 because that's when technically they get... I think I can read the hearing article. It is a public hearing whereby the applicant seeks an appeal of an administrative decision made by the Kingston Planning Board. The applicant alleges that an error has been made in the decision determination or requirement by the planning board on or about February 19, 2019, whereby the planning board denied use of the site as an overnight use as it was not previously approved by the planning board and is not allowed in the single-family residential zone in relation to Article One, Section C, Two of the Town of Kingston zoning ordinance. And to help Mr. Romano get caught up a little bit, we've had ongoing hearings and trying to determine how to resolve the issue. It was clear that the zoning board, the issues were not with... The planning board felt that the overnight stays had lapsed, that intermittently had lapsed, and therefore the Camp Lincoln lost its ability to hold overnight. The zoning board felt that the intention was still to have overnight for the campers, and we conferred with counsel on that as well. And Mr. Lothlin upheld that process, that even though there were some lapses when there was a short period of time when there wasn't an overnight use for camping purposes, it still did not, should not conclude that Camp Lincoln continuing doing that for campers. Because there's enough history, they've been doing it for so many years, even with lapses of time. But the issue has come up because of non-camping uses such as weddings, and I'll use that as an example. And the issues arose around how do we help them do that? They should have gone to the planning board, but they wanted to work with the Z B A. And as we progressed, we realized it was beyond our abilities to make the restrictions needed. So I spoke again with attorney Lothlin, and I pose, and in fact, I will have to give you a copy of it, Reed. That's the one. You got another one? Okay. Great, thank you. Did you have, you got one, right, Ben? Yeah, okay.
Just one of the symbols, the same.
Yeah, it's the same. I dated this last one because I wanted to be sure we didn't get confused, because we had a previous one that I had given you.
Correct, yeah.
And it's pretty, it's very similar to that one. We just changed a lot, deleted the last paragraph, which got into the non-conforming uses.
Okay.
Okay? And I emailed...
Well, you know what I discussed with you?
Correct. In the meantime, my vice chairman also came up with some suggestions. This has not been vetted by our attorney, but I wanted you all to have a chance to look at both proposals, and then we could discuss that here. And Larry, could you please give out copies to everyone of ones you're proposing? There are, there's no date. Okay. That's real. Yep.
You want me to give it in?
Yeah, I want him, yes. We all want to have a copy of that now.
You have one?
No, I already passed mine down.
I gave it to them.
Gave it to, yep. So we need one more. Right. The one that...
That's the last paragraph.
Right. He, in effect, he would, what Larry suggested, that we add this at the end.
Take it in place of the last paragraph.
Of the last one, which says, "To this end, camp activities, including occasional overnight camping, is allowed. Concerts, weddings, or recreational activities such as an A T V center are not considered traditional camp activities and are not consistent with established non-conforming use. Variance relief would be necessary for that activity to be allowed on the property." In other words, the camp would have the designer, site plan proposal of how they would accommodate special events for two, three, or four nights, and go before the planning board. We had tried to do a joint meeting between the planning board and the Z B A, but the planning board said we could not do that, and Glenn Greenwood conferred because we, because the planning board didn't have a set of plans before them. So if we stick strictly with the one, the proposal dated 1-9, then the petitioners would get relief to have the overnight camping as part of the regular activities of the campers, the kids, and so forth. But for special events, they would have to put a proposal together, delineate where the cabins are, have inspections if necessary for health and safety reasons, and then go before the planning board to get that approval. The planning board would not be able to do that because it's in a single-family residential. But once you put the plan together, then we can get the two boards to meet at the same time, which is what I know Mr. Fredette wanted to do six months ago.
Correct.
But we couldn't do it. It really came down to the fact that because there was no specific formal plan in front of the planning board, then the two boards could not meet.
Okay.
Okay? But with a plan, we can meet and finish the resolution of the issues at hand. What Mr. Greenbaum is suggesting is that we delineate some of the more specifics. And I wanted my colleagues on the board to have an opportunity to review that and make the decision, do we include that, substitute that last paragraph with this one or not? How does that sound?
So these guys have been on, I mean, I'll let them talk first because I have a lot to say about this.
All right, Reed, what I did in that was take a lot of the things that you had in some of your proposals and incorporate them in here, as well as things that would protect the town.
Yeah. Yeah, I do see some overlap there.
And in fairness to Mr. Romano, we've been conversing. It's not, it's been a work in progress. We have, you know, both sides have worked very amicably to come to a resolution. We don't want to get rid of Camp Lincoln and all the wonderful things they do for so many people over the years, there's no question. But it's veered off into some other new areas that have created a problem. And now that we're aware of it, we have to address it, no question about it.
So in my years on the board, and on the planning board and all that sort of stuff, it sounds like what you're saying, just so that I'm clear, is that they were permitted for camping and overnight camping.
Right.
Correct. For camping activities.
That's right. So why is the Z B A getting even involved? Because that hasn't relaxed, or it hasn't been relinquished, according to the Z B A and the planning board.
The planning board said there had been a discontinuation of overnight camping.
Right.
In other words, the kids who would spend a Thursday night, that there were periods of time when that didn't happen. And they have a new board, new directors, you know, but there's a lot of institutional history. We had both Ellen Fagner and Rick Russman appear in one of the earlier hearings, former board members, who said there was a discontinuation of use.
Okay.
So...
So let's stop right there.
Yep.
There's been a discontinuation. Their purview, or their, they should go back in front of the planning board to get that site plan review all over again so they can do camping.
There's an exception to that.
Okay.
We had, yeah.
That's what I know.
The legislation has evolved through the R S As, that even though there was a discontinuation on a short-term basis, it does not nullify the law.
Yeah.
In other words, Mr. Lothlin, the attorney, said, even though there was some instances where it did lapse, it did not technically lapse overall. In the forty, fifty years of the planning, of the Camp Lincoln's facilities, they still had camping and there still was overnight, even if there was two, three months, or even a year where there was a discontinuation.
Correction, so to me...
So we had, we, the Z B A would have to overturn the decision by the planning board. See, they appealed that decision.
Okay.
Appealed, but it's two parts.
Okay, so that's the, that's the, that's the trigger now.
That's the trigger.
They're coming in front of us to appeal the decision of the planning.
Except that, now you're going to take it one step further. Other activities have also occurred on-site, and those are the ones that need to have a site plan and go to the planning board and get approval.
Right. Okay.
We haven't taken a vote on that yet. So now if we stay with the proposed 1-9-2020 document, it's, in my opinion, a little cleaner, although my colleague was looking to help them put in some more detail. It really, it's really more the purview of the planning board to do this.
Correct.
I understand that, but I wanted you all to see that and either agree or not agree and go accordingly.
Okay, so the remedy for this particular scenario for me is that we're either going to give them relief or we're going to deny them relief. And then their purview is they can go back and sue the town and planning board and say, we've always had this, which then the Z B A is out of the picture totally.
Except, to me, it's clear that we have to give them relief on the administrative decision by the planning board on the camping. That, because that was clearly what Peter Wapikit said. They have been camping, even if they, one year they didn't do it, one summer.
Yeah, and I would agree with that.
So that has to go. But if they want to do anything more than camping, they have to go back to the planning board.
So I guess they have the ability to do the camping.
Right. We haven't ruled on, we haven't had a formal motion on that yet.
Okay. So all we're doing is giving them relief from the order that the planning board, it still leaves that in the planning board's hands to say, if you do something other than this, they can do a cease and desist, and then they can go in front and do all that other stuff.
Correct. Right. That's why I kind of like the 1-9-20, because it's more detailed.
Sure.
It's a more detailed decision than we normally do.
Yes.
But it clearly states that they can have their camping, but anything more, they've got to go get a variance.
So with that said, we can do that.
Yes.
But then we're now in, we're in the driver's seat now, to say what they can and cannot do. This kind of reminds me of what we used to, we did with the mobile on Main Street, where we're controlling the hours of operation outside the site plan review.
And I disagree with you on that.
Okay.
I disagree with you. If we get into the weeds with where they get permits, the police coming in, I think that puts us in that same position as the mobile station down on Main Street. If we stay with, they can have camping like they've had since 1930 something, which means they bring the campers in, they stay a week or two, they have one or two nights overnight, it's not a problem.
Yeah, we're not, we're not...
But that was the, but the, but the planning board said they couldn't even do that.
Right, but you've already gotten, I mean, technically the relief for them is to say, okay, planning board, you're wrong, not to come in front of the Z B A and say, I want relief from that decision, because then we're the deciding authority to do that. And I don't know if that's our curvy.
And I'm still going to disagree. As long as we don't get in the weeds, I think we're okay.
I think it's the difference between the traditional camping and the non-traditional, which is the functions that they rent the space for.
Why?
Yeah, but that's, that's something that the planning board can say, if they're going above and beyond the traditional camping, then they can actually the selectmen and then say, okay, we're going to create a cease and desist, and you really need to come in front of the Z B A, the planning board, to do a site plan review because you're doing something other.
And we're saying...
Just camping.
We're saying they can have just camping, but in order to have anything else, they've got to go before the planning board for site review.
Okay, all I'm saying, then, is that puts us as the board to say, okay, we can kind of dictate what they can and cannot do. That's where I disagree with you, because they've already...
I see, I understand.
Yeah, they've already, they've already got the okay to do camping.
No, they haven't yet.
Well, they've already got, according to...
We haven't, we haven't moved on it.
According to you, what the statements that you're making is that even though the planning board feels that they've relinquished the ability to camp, and we've got legal counsel saying that really they haven't, because they could technically still do that.
Right.
Is really, what are we voting on? So that they can do it twice, or they can continue to do it? They already have that ability. Right?
Well, they're appealing the decision of the planning board.
That's what we're voting on, the appeal, of that they, they think that the planning board did something wrong, and we're trying to give them relief. But there's another mechanism for them to do that, right? Because technically, they still have that ability to do camping legally, based on the legal counsel that we've got as the board.
Right, but that's where I say we have to, we have to deny, we have to grant the relief from the administrative decision, because how else is that's going to go forward?
Well, they can turn around and say, well, we still believe that we have this capability, and we can take the planning board to court.
All right, well, I guess I'll state, and for me, I'd rather clean up the one area that we're all in con, agree on.
Right.
And tell them, if you do anything else, you've got to go to the planning board. And you're welcome to speak. Could you state your name, sir?
I was just going to say to Mr. Romano.
Could you state your name for us, please?
I'm sorry, I'm Mark Sullivan, I'm the attorney representative of the Y.
Okay.
What we did for the planning board, when you talked about, we appealed, and the appeal is to this board.
Correct.
And so this board, when we had the hearing, this board essentially is saying that the planning board decision is wrong.
Yeah, I agree.
So, so, but, but the board brought up, not the grandfather, but since it was non-conforming, then we started talking about expanding the non-conforming aspects on traditional camping to having weddings and that kind of thing. And so this proposal is, is to, it appears to say that the board will say that the traditional camping is fine, but then we go on, and the board is saying that the non-traditional is not consistent with the traditional, and so we'd have to get a variance. But there's also an aspect where if we want to have that, we can get a special event permit.
And quite honestly, Camp Lincoln could have done that this summer, and then we directed them to do so, and they chose not to, so they canceled all their special...
Well, I don't think they knew that, but yeah, they did...
Oh, no, it's part of the record. We did, we did clearly state that as an alternative.
So are we going above and beyond on this board? Because technically, we're going to give them relief of the planning board's decision that they don't have the ability to do traditional camping. And technically, they still have the ability to do traditional camping.
Yeah, and I see, I see this too. I don't know, I've been here for some of my other, I think we have to grant relief from traditional camping and say that continues, but anything further has to go back to the planning board.
Anything that, to tell you the truth, anything that the planning board deems is non-traditional, they have the ability to stop you.
Well, we have a nice letter from Peter Lothlin that clearly defines what expansion of a non-conforming use.
Right.
And there are three questions they would have to answer.
So, which is my point, to the point where all we're trying to do is give them relief from what the planning board has decided, and if they turn around and say, hey, guys, you're still in non-conformity through the selectmen, then that's another issue that needs to come in front of the board. Right?
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes, it does.
Having, having said that, I see in your proposal, it says, "Non-traditional use, weddings, corporate groups, not style, require a special event permit which is enforced by the board of selectmen or designated," and so...
We haven't acted on that. That was, that's...
No.
That's just a proposal, proposal to add to the other...
Well, I'm just adding, well, to the one that was submitted?
Yeah.
Oh, oh, to this one. Oh, okay, okay.
We would substitute that for...
Okay, so this is, oh, this is, okay. So, but it says, yeah, I mean, a special event permit by the selectmen. So what is that? And what would the Y have to do to get that?
It's why I just assumed I didn't go this route, to be honest with you. I wouldn't, I wouldn't get into the weeds with this one here, not at all. I would stick with the 1 dated 1-9-2020 as the motion, because that is way beyond our...
The other, the short one you have there, the substitute, is something I came up with to try to see if we couldn't put this to bed...
Get a discussion and see how the board felt.
Once and for all.
Okay, well, I mean, I would, I would say to the board that, that the proposal here is, is, you know, can't be acceptable to the Y. If they have to get, you're saying they would have to get a variance for, for the, if they have weddings and all that stuff, they have to seek a variance.
Because, yes, they would have to have a site plan of whether these activities are going to take place, where the cabins are located, it's been a long time since we've had a full, you know, site plan of the property. The fire department's going to have to weigh in, the building inspectors and permitting, all that has to, that's all beyond the zoning board's purview, which is why we clear up the camping part, and then you go for, you being the Camp Lincoln goes forward for the expansion of the non-conforming use into special events. And then if that, that could trigger a meeting, a joint meeting with the Z B A so that you don't have to go back and forth.
Okay, so, so what the board is saying tonight is it's going to vote on this proposal that's...
Correct.
Mr. Greenbaum prepared?
No.
You prepared, that's right.
I prepared, the 1-9-2021, it was one I prepared with town...
It's a single page.
Single page.
And so basically, it's going to, it's going to say that you can do continued camping, but you can't do non, you know, the non-traditional camping.
Right.
And, and then you're leaving it up to the Y then to pursue non-traditional through...
The planning board.
Planning board.
Correct. Right.
Your site plan review involves necessary...
And if, and if the planning board wants, and if the Camp Lincoln wants, once you have those plans in front of the planning board, you could do a joint meeting if you want to try to expedite things. But the planning board has to have a set of plans in front of it. And I, you see another one of your directors that want to speak back there? Yes. Why don't you come on?
And just so the board knows, they've done this before, about five, maybe seven years ago.
What, have joint meetings?
No, no, no.
We've had those.
Come in front of the planning board for non-conforming use of that piece of property.
Okay.
And then they've gone through the site plan review.
Yep.
And then they've come into the Z B A asking for...
Okay.
To me, that's the proper approach.
Chuck, Richard, did you want to add anything, any other comments?
No, I saw a bunch of them, so I was just being on the...
Yeah. You're going so well, yeah.
I, no, other than I think it's good that we get them to get the camping part of it.
I agree, I agree.
My only thought is, when I was reading it, was to have the variance relief. Now, to me, if I read that, it would be, the fact is that they wanted to have a wedding on a weekend in August, like if they were having something at the plane, they would go to the selectmen and get, you know, get a permit.
That, that could happen, but, but by the same token, what I'm, I think we really, they need to have a plan, they need to have procedures in place, you know, way for checks and balance for safety issues.
So under your auspices there, if they go to the planning board, what we're talking about, do it.
Yep.
And the planning board agrees with it, you know, at least agrees with the setup and they have all the information.
Yep.
And they vote on it, and they say, yep, okay, you know, you're all set to be able to have the weddings under these certain conditions. After that fact, do they still have to go to, with the presumption to be, would they still have to go to the selectmen every time they have an event?
No.
So, in my thinking, the planning board is a one-time shot. Here it is, once it gets approved, you guys have, you have to go to Briggs and the different people.
And technically, the planning board can't give the final approval. They can review the plans for the site plan, make sure that the inspector, electric, hose, fire, all approve, and then the Z B A has to give it a variance to allow an expansion of a non-conforming use in a single-family residential, in which case we could be at that same meeting and have everything done at one time.
So if, and the fact is if that happens, that's okay. That happens.
Yep, yep.
And it all, let's say it all gets approved.
Yep.
They won't have, so when they have an event, other than notifying the different town departments, as they would if they were having something on the plane, they don't have, they won't have to go to the selectmen.
That's correct.
Okay.
It has to be written in the site plan.
Correct.
All those notes could be written in the site plan.
You know, as long as they're conforming with what's allowed and the, and safety regulations are in place, there's no reason for you to go to selectmen every time you have a weekend vacation.
I would agree to that, out of this.
Mr. Romano.
Yeah, so I guess two things. We feel like we already, we already connect with the fire department, right? Every spring before we open, they already come and inspect, they come and inspect our buildings, cabins that are overnight, that, you know, they've known we've done overnights, they've got our building plans, and that's the same, you know, the chief of police, we've been, strong connections with Chief Briggs for a long time, and he already knows we've been doing it overnight, and, you know, we work with the police department to make sure we're within the recommendations that they say. The town should already have a lot of our building plans and site plans, because, you know, over the last couple of years, we've built some new cabins, we've extended, we've had a treehouse, all of those have been given to the town, been approved, or that's, you know, we feel like those plans are already with you guys. And then I guess the second thing to say is, unfortunately, we won't be able to accept this tonight, because this is the first time we've seen it, and it'll have to go towards our board.
You don't have a choice. This is not a, this won't be a negotiation. It's not, it's not a matter of choice on this one here. We talked, we had things back and forth over the last few months trying to come to a conclusion, but it's not a... We, we talked, we had things back and forth over the last few months trying to come to a conclusion, but it, it's not a, this is not debatable at this point. We, we, we want to bring closure here so you can go forward. If you have plans in place, I would, well, if there are all those pla, I know there's a lot in the file, but you may want to sit down with, with Glenn Greenwood, the Rockingham County Planner, and Mrs. Facher, who is Secretary of the Planning Board, review what's in the file, see what you have available, put a proposal together. You may have most of the drawings already in place. I, I know I saw one, and I don't know if that's the most recent, where you had the cabins outlined. I was still on the board when you came before us for the special service, special needs children, uh, treehouse. And, and I believe there was some kind of drawings there, I just don't remember offhand, but you may have a lot of that in place. It's just a matter of organizing it, to put it in as a proposal with what specifics, types of beds you want to have, approval to do. You know, more organized, defined, special events beyond the nonconforming use. And once you define those with the parameters therein, it, it shouldn't be any difficulty. You're right, when you say you meet with the fire chief and the police chief, you've done that, we know that. You know, you've been a good neighbor, it's not a, that's not in contention here. We just want to make sure that now that we know there are other things that were occurring beyond the camping, as a town, we have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that it's safe for the people staying there. Because the town could get sued as well, or the neighbors around the lake. I mean, it opens up all kinds of possibilities. We're just trying to do things the right way and with a more defined. We don't want to run into selectmen every time you want to schedule a wedding, that's ridiculous, you know, it's a waste of everybody's time. You need to have a plan together in place, approved by the planning board, and done by the ZBA's of variance, and we're good to go. And it's January, we've got a couple of months here. You should be able to do it in time for your April 12 opening. You have any other comments, sir?
As you said, it's not a negotiation.
It isn't, it isn't, no, well, I mean, it lets you have, that's not to say you couldn't comment, I mean, we'd welcome your opinions, I, I, we're not shutting you down here.
Wouldn't it be more economical if you required to do variance, to seek the variance?
So, I would say, the only reason I wouldn't vote for that tonight is because.
Oh, well, it's gone.
I, I, I guess what I'm saying to you is, I don't know all the little pieces of what you're trying to do or how you're trying to do it. So typically, when we go through a site plan review, we get review of that, so we get all the little notes saying, okay, you're going to be granted.
I understand the site plan review. What I'm saying is, is shouldn't the variance come before the site plan?
Oh, no.
No, because we won't, I, I know what you're saying, but even, even if, even if we wanted to give you a variance, we can't. Because the original legal notice was an appeal of an administrative decision.
Oh, no, I understand.
And then we would follow that along.
I'm talking about that tonight.
But you'd have to have a plan for what you wanted a variance for, and I don't know that we can approve that.
It would have to be denied by the planning board for us, for us to take, take it.
Right. Planning board will work with you to develop the, the contingencies. They still have to vote no because they can't grant relief without the variance, which is why, which is why we could do a joint meeting then. And so you, you'd be working on the specifics, we'd be there representing the ZBA and also take a vote. So you wouldn't have to wait another six, eight weeks to come back before us. That we can help you with, and do a, a joint session on that.
Kate Cook, I'm Chair of the Board of Directors for Southern District YMCA and Camp Lincoln.
Okay.
Um, I, I just wanted to address that we've been through this process now with the Town of Kingston for over a year. It has delayed our planning, delayed our programming. We've lost a lot of revenue, as I said at the last meeting that I attended of this zoning board. We believe, and we think we have the legal basis to believe this, that weddings and other events at the site are a natural outgrowth of our grandfathered nonconforming use that we have already legally to do. In that sense, this proposal does not meet the, the legal standard that we believe we already have. And as a result, the Board of Directors will not be happy with this proposal. Especially after a year of working with the town, trying to work out, uh, planning and trying to make sure that we were all on the same page to continue events that we've been having for numerous years without any problems with the town. Where we've had oversight from the police department, oversight from the fire department, where we have been making sure we have regular inspections. There have been no complaints about our events and anything going outside of what the provisions are for the town. So it's very frustrating, as you can imagine, for us to be brought here to spend over a year's worth of time trying to just continue our grandfathered nonconforming use. And then see a proposal like this all of a sudden when we've been trying to work with you for a few months. So I just wanted you to know that that will be the position of the Board of Directors.
Well, this, this, this last proposal, you may not have seen this specific one, but you saw one almost identical to it not that long ago. So in fairness, that's not quite true. And in terms of, that it's a total surprise is what I'm saying. It's not a total surprise, it's been, it's evolved. Well, one more click from the last time you saw it, not you, uh, might have been you reading, I don't remember who had get, I, or Mr. Fedett, couldn't remember which. But if you remember correctly, in a previous zoning board meeting, we said you could get relief on a temporary basis by getting a special permit from the selectmen. That was it, and, and you don't seem to remember it, but I, I clearly, I'll have to go back in the minutes. And I'm almost positive that we said that to someone from Camp Lincoln in a public hearing, that you could get temporary relief by going to the selectmen for special events. For getting a permit for a special event. And it, but at the subsequent meeting, we were told that you would cancel all events and it cost you fifty thousand dollars, all special events, not the camping activities. So, we're, we're going to agree to disagree. I'm sorry you feel that way, but in, yes, Mr. Romano.
So I have a question.
Sure.
So if we grant you relief of this particular capability of doing camping, are you saying that you're going to just go ahead and do weddings and all the stuff that you did prior to this?
We believe that that's part of our legal grandfathered use, it's an outpropping of our legal.
I give you my answer.
Okay, so, and our attorney's saying those other things, like weddings, is not a, not an outgrowth.
It's an expansion of a nonconforming use. I think, please.
Let me read you the section on the, on, from Mr. Lawson's letter. "While it is the general policy of zoning to carefully limit the extension and enlargement of nonconforming uses based on the premise that the extension or enlargement of nonconforming use may be more detrimental to zoning than a variance, so-called natural expansion of a nonconforming use may be allowed under some circumstances, but only a limited expansion is permitted and a landowner has the burden to show that the expansion is not such that it constitutes an entirely new use, thus violating the intent of the zoning ordinance. The determination of whether a particular use is substantially the same kind of use as that which was originally established as nonconforming is based on the facts and circumstances of each particular case. In deciding whether a particular activity is within the scope of the established nonconforming use, consideration may be given to, among others, the following factors, and there are three. One, to what extent does the use in question reflect the nature and purpose of the prevailing nonconforming use? Two, is it merely a different manner of utilizing the same use? Or does it constitute a, constitute a use different in character, nature, and kind? And three, does the use have a substantially different effect on the neighborhood? Those are the three criteria. And your normal camping meets it. I, to my opinion, a wedding does not. Wedding does not. That's my opinion.
A private function, almost a private function of any kind that is not camp-sponsored, doesn't meet that criteria.
So may I ask, then are you saying that when the Girl Scouts rent the camp privately, that they do not meet the criteria?
They're camping.
Are they getting married?
How does that matter?
No, there, it doesn't.
Other things that are associated with that.
Uh, the Girl Scouts camping, coming camping, a private group that comes, is, is part of the nonconforming use.
Is part of it, exactly.
That's why you want to know what you want to do beyond this. See, that's, okay, I, I don't want to argue with you.
Yeah, I, I think we need to vote on whether we're going to give them relief or not. And that's probably the reason why the planning board and the selectmen decided that they're not, they're.
I don't think the selectmen had anything to do with it.
Or whoever designed, whoever denied them this capability.
Planning board.
For us to be in front of, making this decision today.
It's an appeal of a planning board decision.
Even if traditional camp activities which have occurred on a regular basis over a period of years may be evidence of a nonconforming right to continue that activity, that does not mean that any and all activities on the camp property are permitted. The three-part test cited above for analyzing whether an activity is within or beyond the scope of the nonconforming use must be applied in each instance. So, Girl Scouts coming for campery fits, a wedding does not. For example, if the camp proposed to use its land as a venue for concerts, weddings, or recreational activities such as an ATV center, such activities might not be considered to be traditional camp activities. It may indeed have a different impact on the neighborhood. Okay, I, I'm straight out of Peter Lawson. And that's where this proposal dated one nine twenty came from. Okay, any other comments or questions or?
So, are you going to vote on this proposal tonight?
We're going to vote whether or not to grant the administrative relief from the decision.
Do you want us to?
Of course we want administrative relief, but.
Well, that, I'm, I'm just looking at your facial expression and I'm not sure.
No, but I, I'm just saying that our position will remain that, you know, we, we should have.
You will do what you have to do. Because I, I don't see how we can go many further on this one. And it's a straight motion to either, either uphold or not.
I will make a motion to take the proposal, proposed ZBA decision on Camp Lincoln dated one nine twenty twenty and approve it at seven forty-five, one nine twenty.
Is there a second?
One second, one nine twenty.
Discussion.
Just, I, I think, for the camp itself, I mean, this way it, it, it's a better move than deciding that you don't want to do anything and then take another year to go to court and sue whoever you want to sue. This is, right now, going to be the most expedient way. And I would agree, I have seen the pictures of the camp and the fire department and all the things that they have done. So if you would meet with Glenn, or Ellen, or somebody and show them all that stuff, get on the next planning board agenda, which you could do within a month's time probably, and do it. If in fact, the planning board and/or this board down the road decides not to, well then, you do have the option of going and suing. I would, my opinion, find it hard to believe after all the discussions and the support that you guys showed up with in the first go-around, with the people who want Camp Lincoln to be Camp Lincoln, that the planning board and/or this ZBA board, once it gets squared away like they're asking you to do, is going to have a problem with it. So if you have all your answers, and it's a yes-go by April, then you can continue on with whatever your summer activities, you know, may want to be with it. And you know, we've set the parameters as to what they're looking at, if there's going to be a wedding for three days. We know that you're going to get a policeman and you're going to do all of that, but you have no reason not to. You've done that in the past, and you've had things there. So, I would not, if I were you, I would not fight this any further than what it is. We've laid it out for you, we're going to give you the camping part of it with the Girl Scouts and the rest of it. And then whatever next time you can get on the planning board, and if it's suggested for the joint meeting, whatever that time is, I just don't, I don't think, the ultimate goal will not be negative, in my opinion. So I would just say, let's, you know, get it done so you can move on. And you've got probably two-thirds of the work done for the planning board, because there are fire department letters on file, there is a, a block plant. Maybe they want a little bit more on it, but whatever the stuff is there, you've already shown where the camps are, where the guns are, they have all that. Which is what the planning board and/or we would want to see if we were looking at it originally, so.
Thank you. Chuck, Mr. Romano, any comments?
No.
No. No, I, I, you had my vote until you spoke. Quite honestly, because if you think that anything and everything that the Camp Lincoln has been doing is within your purview, I do not agree with that. Sure.
If, if you pass this, we of course won't do anything to go against a ruling of the board. That's not something that we would ever do, just so you know. I mean, if, if you pass this, we then know we cannot go on and do weddings until we go to the planning board or find other relief. We know that.
So.
We have never, we never do anything in violation.
You're confusing me now, because you said clearly that you would not, you, you think you have a nonconforming continuum in all the aspects, but we're saying you don't.
No, what, what I'm saying is, that's what we believe we have. But you've seen, we've spent a year not having any overnights because we were told not to, even though we believe we have the right to do so. We abide by the rulings of the planning board and of the zoning board, and we intend to.
Can I make a comment to that? I, I would agree with that, and I think that's the reason why they denied you, is because you do have that belief. Now they're asking, you're asking us to give you relief from that? And by accepting this, we're telling you that we're going to give you the camp, you can still do your camping, your overnight camping. But anything above that, you need to go in front of the planning board to get. Now, it could be a simple thing. Take your, your current site plan review and add a few notes saying that, hey, I'm going to be doing some weddings, I'm going to tell you when they are, I'm going to have these police details. We're going to have the fire department go through this. Planning board accept this? They're going to say no. And you're going to say, okay, well, all you need to do is go in front of the ZBA for a variance. And I can almost guarantee you, if all that stuff is in the site plan review, that's all we're trying to do, is make sure that the other departments know what's going on, so that we can make a decision or give you relief from it. Right?
Yeah. Because it hasn't just been the town that has been working it, you all have to. We've been working very co, collaborating together and to come to this resolution, and I hope that you still go forward. Put my vote back on the yes. I just have to, I have to be upfront with you, I need to, I don't want to mislead you in any way. Okay?
Okay, good.
Are we ready for the motion? Okay, all those in favor of adopting the proposed ZBA decision on Camp Lincoln dated one nine twenty twenty, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Any extensions? Ayes have it, it passed unanimously. So, we'll have a letter of decision out to you within the week. And we look forward to seeing you at the planning board for the next step, okay? Thank you very much. Thank you all, and I know this was just difficult. Okay, we have our next one. No, it was good, I was like, we're working. No, 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 I, I think you were a big help, I think you were a big help. You helped clarify. Okay, our next hearing is, uh, Mr. Pasco, OSP Realty LLC.
I've been consulted an attorney who doesn't appear to be here yet, so I'm asked for a little more time and push me into the next.
We can do that.
Hearing, and then I may need a continuous if he shows up.
Okay, okay. All right, then we'll proceed with Mr. Kalil. Richard, come on down. Would you come on down? Ben, you're welcome to participate in the discussion, but you don't need to vote on this one, but I do need to approve Mr. Pasco.
Hello again.
Greetings. Welcome.
I'm Attorney Patricia D'Amelio. I'm representing Mr. Khalil.
Okay, let me read the public notice here for you. Robert Khalil, Six Lakeside Drive, Actuson, nineteen thirty, Fox Map R twenty-two lot thirty-two. This is a public hearing whereby the applicant requests that Town of Kingston's ZBA grant a rehearing on a decision it made on November fourteen, twenty nineteen. This decision denied the applicant a variance to the terms of Article one oh four, section four J of the Town of Kingston zoning ordinance to permit a three-family dwelling. Approval for this was originally granted on July thirteen, twenty seventeen, and the variance has since expired. D'Amelio, are you going to speak on behalf of Mr. Khalil?
I am going to speak on behalf of Mr. Khalil.
And before you start, I'm going to say, this is a request to grant a hearing, so should the hearing be granted, then you would have until next Wednesday to put in the application, the filing fees, and the labels for the notifying the abiders. That is the procedure.
But we did this in two thousand and seventeen.
Yeah, I know, but that's two and a half years ago. That doesn't count.
So the procedure's different. So today?
No, 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 you're going through.
We didn't have to refile and file and pay again, but if that's the requirement, that's fine.
That is the procedure.
So as I understand it, tonight, the board will determine whether or not to grant a rehearing.
Correct. In which case, the rehearing would be held in the next available month, which would be February. But the deadline for the application with the labels and the fees is next Wednesday. It's the third Wednesday of the month. Should you not make that deadline, it would go to the following month.
Okay.
Just one you've noted right up front. That is the procedure on that.
Thank you.
So, now you proceed, Mr. D'Amelio.
Well, briefly, I think most of the board members are the same as to when we were here in two thousand and sixteen and two thousand and seventeen, if you recall. And at that point, after a million meetings, I don't know exactly how many there were, we reached a compromise as to granting a special exception for three units when the original request was four. Pardon?
The variance.
No, it's not a variance. It's a special exception. That's what was granted in two thousand and seventeen. And unfortunately, when Mr. Khalil was told he has to reapply, he put down a variance, but it was a special exception. And do you need a copy of the letter?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's the letter that, of the hearing. Special exception was withdrawn.
No, there were two requests. One was withdrawn and one was, and if you see what we.
Oh, wouldn't grant. However, that article does not have a special exception, and it does not permit a special exception. The special exceptions are only granted when a special exception occurs, is allowed in the ordinances. So.
This board granted a special exception, which is what we applied for, to Article, this happened in two thousand and seventeen, so I don't even know. But that's what it is. It's a special exception. It's not a variance.
This is his folder?
Um, this is, that's his ZBA. So that was granted in two thousand and seventeen with conditions, and the condition was that he had to appear before the planning board for a site plan review and obtain all permits. So, when he went to the planning board with the site plan, it was just over two years. He went beginning of September. And I'm mentioning that because at the last hearing, one of the board members, and I'm not sure who, said, you know, it would be different if it, you know, was like one or two months, but this is six months, and I want to make it clear it wasn't six months. In your, Mr. Khalil asked in his original application for a variance, which.
He did ask for a variance.
He did ask for a variance, which it is, and it's a special exception, but he also asked for.
I have his application in front.
Right, he asked for a variance. I understand that, but he also asked for an extension, and that has not been addressed.
When he asked for an extension, for when?
It's in the application. He asked for an extension on the two years.
The comment for an extension, by the way, there is a statute that allows an extension to be granted if the planning board has received the application within the two-year limit. This two-year limit went into effect in twenty.
Wait, hold on, Peter. Hold on. You are correct. You are correct, but we can't give him an extension until we have a hearing. And this is to determine whether or not he gets a hearing.
You had the hearing.
No, we didn't have.
You didn't address that issue. You had a hearing and you rendered a decision, and in your decision in the.
Well, well, Mr. D'Amelio, in two thousand and seventeen, he did not ask.
No, 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 I'm talking about now. He requi, in the two thousand and eighteen, he, when he was told.
Wait, whoa, whoa.
Okay, let me start over.
You better start over, because I'll tell you, right now, in two thousand and seventeen, he got a variance to have a three-family unit in a two-family residential district.
Okay.
Okay?
I'm going to reread your decision into the record, so we're all clear on what we're dealing with. Dear Mr. Khalil, at the July thirteenth, two thousand and seventeen, meeting of the Board of Adjustment of the Town of Kingston, the board voted to grant a special exception to Article one oh four dash four J, under the criteria of Article one oh four five J, allowing a three-apartment structure at nineteen-page road. The request for the special exception as to, for Article two oh six point two is withdrawn by the applicant prior to the vote. You will have to appear before the planning board for a site plan review and obtain all permits from the building inspector. In order to allow any interested party an opportunity to challenge this decision, you must wait thirty days from the granting of the variance to begin construction. So that's what you granted in two thousand and seventeen, okay?
What's the date of that?
July seventeenth, two thousand and seventeen. Right, and. So in two thousand and seventeen, a special exception was granted. Mr. Khalil went to the planning board beginning of September, less than two months after the time allegedly expired.
Do you have the date, September or what?
I have a, I don't have the exact date. I know the plan was completed on September sixth. The planning board would not accept the plan because it was more than two years from the date of the special exception, and said he had to come back to the zoning board.
So, just so I know, so he came back to the planning board, September sixth, two thousand eight, two thousand nineteen.
Around September sixth. I said that's.
Two thousand nineteen.
Correct.
More than two years after the.
Two years and fifty days. Planning board said you must go back to the Board of Adjustment and get an extension on your special exception. So, Mr. Khalil, on his own, applied, and in his application, as you were correct, he asked for a variance and an extension on the special exception, and that was denied. You did not address the special except, the request.
It was.
It's not addressed in the minutes, and it's not addressed in your decision. So.
I was there, so I do remember the occasion, and the reason for that is an extension is something you grant when something hasn't expired. Once it's expired.
We don't need an extension if it hasn't expired.
Yes, if you can't meet the required date.
Didn't put in the third apartment, and your variance expired.
Right.
Wasn't a variance, was a special.
Special exception.
Okay, a special exception. It's a big difference.
No, it's not a big difference.
Of course it is. The criteria for a variance.
Still expired.
And under the statute, for good cause, this board can grant an extension. And it's not like Mr. Khalil was doing nothing for the two years, and most of the board members and the people at the town hall have commented that this property, the aesthetics of the property have improved tremendously. It's not finished, but it's improved. So I think we need a rehearing, because if you discussed it in your meeting, that's fine. It's not in your minutes, and it's not in your decision that you denied the extension. What's in the decision is that you denied the variance, because he didn't meet the five criteria. So therefore, we're asking for a rehearing, so we can discuss whether or not he's entitled to an extension. And I, there are some very good reasons why he would be entitled to an extension, and I don't know if you want me to go into those now, or you want to determine whether or not you're going to have a rehearing.
I would think we should hear why.
Yeah, I think that would be, that would remain to whether we're going to vote for a rehearing or not, is to whether the extension exists, unless you want.
Rehearing is granted when new evidence is presented.
Right, but what I'm saying here is that if they're just going to have a rehearing, I'll tell you what happened. In between this time, there were some wording changes in this particular construction, so that a special exception is no longer in that Article one oh four. So that's why he had to apply for a variance this time.
Okay.
Do you understand that?
The law has changed.
The law.
The law has changed, so now it's a variance.
The ordinance changed.
But if he's asking for an extension, it's grandfathered. It doesn't change.
I know, but the decision was grandfathered as a variance, not a special exception.
I just read you, decision of two thousand and seventeen, it's a special exception. I can't change that word.
Right, I understand that.
Okay.
However, what people do is they go for an extension when they can't meet, they ask for an extension before the variance has expired, or the special exception has expired, because you can't make it. For example, the statute, the RSA, specifically allows an extension of six months if you've gone to the planning board, and the planning board, it needs the extra time. If he'd gotten to the planning board in July, and, you know, filed with the planning board in July, he would have, and they'd taken it. Then, one of the first things that would happen is that the extension would be automatically granted for six months for the special exception to remain in extent during the time the planning board is acting. Once it's expired, you don't extend, you can't extend something that is expired.
I disagree with you as to how to interpret the statute. The statute says, "Special exceptions authorized under this paragraph shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of final approval," which is another issue, "or as further extended by local ordinance, or by the zoning board of adjustment for good cause." Doesn't say you have to apply beforehand, because he didn't even know until the planning board denied it, said it's expired, "provided that no such special exception shall expire within six months after resolution of a planning board application." So it's not six months from the time he applied. It's six months after the resolution at the planning board.
Right.
So we're not even there yet, because my argument would be, this isn't even the final approval, because.
He hasn't been to the planning board on that issue.
Right.
No, it says two years.
It's not advanced, but Mr. Khalil has not addressed the third apartment in there. Hasn't done anything about it. Hadn't even started the plans.
He did, however, start doing the work, which is how this came to.
I know you don't care about this, but, so you know he wasn't sitting there, you know.
He's done other things.
He had a problem with the engineer, who obviously didn't do the work he was hired to do. And, you know, he called him every day, and he should have, should have called me. I would have told him to get another engineer, but that didn't happen, but he wasn't sitting idly by. And back to what the statute says, it says, "Special exceptions authorized under this paragraph shall be valid if exercised within two years from the date of final approval." There has been no final approval on this project yet. Your own decision talks about the fact that you, before you can do anything, you must go to the planning board, and you must get building permits. Therefore, it's not a final approval yet.
It's a final approval from the ZBA.
Your order is conditional on planning board approval and building.
Actually, it was not. We do know what conditional means, and that was not a conditional approval.
You read it one way, I read it another way.
Judge will read it another way.
But that was not a condition of approval. He did get a final approval. That's written in this letter for a special exception. However, I see the point that we did not get that into the minutes, and I think that if you want to have a rehearing to address the issue of whether we would grant an extension, extension, but after the fact, as it were, that was probably our mistake in not having that discussion put into the minutes, but.
Excuse me, but I listened to the YouTube of this meeting. There was no discussion that I heard. You know, it's a video.
I heard Ellie say that the reason he was here was because it had expired. And expired means we can't extend, so it's too late for an extension at that point. People come in and request extensions when they know they can't meet the deadline, and we do that all the time with the sixty-day windows and things like that, or the applicants do, when certain things can't get done in the amount of time, and you grant continuances and extensions. The reason I brought up the business about our ordinance changing is that that's why he's applied for a variance, and that is correct this time, because there's no ability to go for this ordinance.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
Sorry, there's no ability to go for the special exception under our one oh four ordinance. The variance would be proper. And that's why we heard it de novo, and the two-year thing, that was, that went to effect in early twenty thirteen, that law, and you were represented by an attorney. We specifically told you that you would need to go to the planning board, and you said you'd be there within a month or two at the most. And the attorneys apparently did not advise you of that law that required two years. That's not our fault. That's a state statute. You were represented by counsel, and that was, I would be complaining to the counsel that you were misled.
That's totally inappropriate.
Well, I'm sorry, but that's.
Totally inappropriate.
You're representing yourself as the.
That is really inappropriate, and I object to that, and I think you should do something about it. That's demeaning me, defaming me, and that is not, this is not the place for that.
I'm establishing a.
We're getting more off the subject here.
We're getting way off the subject.
Correct, I agree, and I will, I have compared both ordinances from the time we were originally here to today, and I, where was the change? I must have missed it. Where was the change?
Well, if you look at the ordinance today, there was some confusion. It came after one oh four point seven, and the ordinance, and it was written at the time. You'll find it references to special.
I know that we need to.
No, that's true.
Varyance versus special exception.
Okay, but I'm pointing out that the special exception requires that a special exception be granted, be written in the ordinance that you're seeking to repulse, and it's not there. So that's why it's proper to be a variance. So, that's all really need to know. The variance is the proper request, and it.
That's fine, Peter. I, we can, I get still in the legal notice, put special exception slash variance if we decide to go forward, so that it covers it the way and respects the special exception from the original granting, and recognizes that there's been a change in how it's described today as a variance as opposed to special. It, the question is moved in that one respect, but do we want to grant a rehearing? That's the question at hand. And if we grant a rehearing, then I mean to come before this if, for the first time, with a proposal on what you want to do with that third apartment if a hearing is granted. Am I correct in reading the way of the land here?
Yeah, well, actually, I guess I would probably want to know, is the request based on requesting an extension, or are we just going to go with the idea of requesting a rehearing on a variance de novo?
Well, I haven't listened to the YouTube. I don't listen to the tapes of the meetings, and if I, I'm pretty sure I was pretty clear about it being beyond the two years. I think that was the whole issue, and you did want an extension on an existing variance, and I didn't see it as an extension of an existing variance, because the variance had expired. The variance had expired. Or the special, call it what you will, the ability to put in the third apartment expired, because no, nothing transpired. You had done nothing with the planning board. That's why the two years, that's why you have a two-year window.
He'd gotten building permits during that period. He may have had a building permit.
For the apartment?
A number of building permits he had for the building, but nothing.
A number of building permits he had for the building, but nothing.
For the building, but not for that apartment?
Not for the.
Because I spoke to the building inspector just the other day, and asked him, he said, yeah, he's been in here several times. What for? For windows, for, I don't remember, there were a list of things that you would come in.
Why the apartment for the site, and which is the whole building, which is.
So that includes the third apartment?
That includes the third apartment.
But there's only, there are only, only two legal apartments in there.
Now you're, now you're stretching, now, now you're really slinging a little, uh. Well, the building does, if, if you, but the third apartment itself, there was no.
Doesn't exist.
Technically, it doesn't exist right now.
And, and you knew that you had to go to the planning board and get a site plan review to get the building permit.
Get, get, get back off a little bit. If the third apartment, see, one of the things I think the board looked at is that you got a two fam, right now, you have a two-family house, two-family.
This is renovating.
You have a two-family house that's conforming use, two-family. You're not, you're in compliance with the regs right now. You, you worked it before, it's better than what Mr. Crosby had, I, no, not even a question about that. By the same token, no work was done in that third apartment. So if you want to come, you could start all over, technically.
So could I say something?
Sure.
I know I'm not gonna vote, I, I think it makes sense that if the board granted to, granted you a special exception in two thousand and seventeen, I don't see any reason why the board, nothing's really changed, you're still gonna have to go through the planning board. The, what it sounds like to me is that you're ready to go to the planning board now, and all you're asking for is to kind of just reheare this piece of the puzzle so that you can go in front of the planning board to get the third apartment.
But it took us a year and a half to hear it the first time, so if we're gonna reheare it, we're back to another year and a half.
What, 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 what are you talking about, you, it took a year and a half to go to the planning board?
Took us a year and a half from the first application for this project till the time it was granted.
Not with the zoning board?
Yes, with the zoning board, the first.
Well, part of, excuse me. Part of that problem was the fact that he didn't own it, and the owner was giving, making it difficult for them, for you people, and for us.
Just to clarify, the owner gave us.
We couldn't go in the site, all, all building inspectors, anyone was.
The owner gave us power of attorney, and the first application was, yeah, was given to this board in two thousand and sixteen.
Well, we sent, when an inspector went down, it were refused access, and that was one of the problems we had.
You know, I was gonna say.
Listen, is it gonna be another year and a half process, I guess is what I'm saying.
Well, actually, we did a hearing on this, and it took us one night, and, uh, we did do a hearing on the variance request, and it took us one night, it didn't pass all the criteria, and it was denied. So you're having a question of rehearing, but, um, I am, but that wasn't a year and a half, that was one night. So, uh, that may give you.
So, if I, if I read you right, is you just want to come in front of the ZBA, get another rehearing, go through the process so we can certainly get a variance, or.
Whatever you want us to get.
Either slash, special exception, slash variance, so that you have the ability to go in front of the planning board to get the third apartment.
Correct.
I got the approval the first time, so I like that.
I, 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 I think.
You want to know why?
It was a simple thing.
I thought it was a simple thing.
But that's why, you came in with nothing.
Right.
Came in with nothing.
I have my daughter, that's on.
So, I would just.
She didn't say a word, though.
We're here next time, yeah, well, necessary word, but.
Maybe you, you move forward with the.
Grant a rehearing.
But, but the criteria is that they just re, uh, post the abutters, just because, who knows what's happened in the past few years that.
Well, that would be, that's our current procedure here, in granting the rehearing, we have to notify the abutters and, and post a legal notice.
Yeah, some of them had changed, I just, I just did the abutters a couple months ago.
Yeah, but if they grant the rehearing, we have to, it's Wednesday, to come in and do the abutters.
It's a new, it's a new deal, it's a new deal.
That's what you said, next Wednesday.
Right, though, you didn't pay for the abutters in the last meeting, because, and I remember I said to you, you're at the penny fees, but if we grant the rehearing, you will, so you got that legal notice, you didn't charge us a legal notice, nothing.
No, I think I paid.
We paid. You did not, you did not, you did not, not for this hearing.
No, not for this hearing.
No, not for this hearing.
Not for this hearing.
The last hearing.
But the town, I mean, all you folks drive by every day, it's the first building you see coming into the.
And we look.
Is it beautiful?
Not yet, you put everything in the back yet, don't even go there, don't even go there.
Sir, since the last meeting, I, there was three cars that, that had junk in, there was a big motorhome that had.
It used to be eight, now there's four, and the motorhome is gone.
There's one, there's one, there's one.
It's better, it's better.
No, there's one vehicle left, I'm telling you.
But it doesn't have anything to do with a third apartment.
I would lie there, be pissed. It looks way better, right? Thank you, I'm getting a lot of confidence, the building inspector's home, he's getting a lot of confidence.
Let's see if you can get a third apartment.
I have a, thank you.
Hey, we should go back to four if we're gonna start all up.
I wouldn't go there, we'd, we'd be in on the next case, wouldn't even go there.
I have, uh, what's really gonna make it shine is that I have a, a, a permit, a vinyl sign in the house, and that's really, I'm gonna pick a real fancy color and make it really nice, like a.
Purple.
No, not purple, if I don't get the approval, it's gonna be.
We need to, wait, 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 we need a motion, you're not done yet, yeah, we just started up.
May I ask Mr. Khalil?
Sure, yeah.
Uh, Mr. Khalil, is this the correct address for you, because our last secretary said everything bounced back to.
We corrected that.
We changed it the last minute.
We got it right?
We corrected that, yes.
So it's Six Lakeside Drive is your correct address, okay.
Where's Tammy today?
She's no longer our secretary.
You gave me dirty looks last time.
No, she was very nice.
You gave me more than dirty looks.
I was a little exhausted, I like, my daughter was like, that, she gave me dirty looks.
And then when we went in, she was very.
Because you got the tax bill back, you, all your stuff was coming back.
The first thing I said when I walked up to Tricia was, I like that lady over there, she's looking nice.
So I guess the only question I have is, uh, is, is what's new from the last.
I need, I need a motion.
Right, but I was wrong, before we, we're in the discussion phase, before I can vote on a motion, I really need to know if there's, if this is for a rehearing of a hearing that we did last month, is there, uh, something new that's gonna be presented, that wasn't presented last month?
Well, they're saying that we didn't, we didn't address in our motion the denial of an extension of the variance, and I think that is sufficient in and of itself.
Okay, so we're gonna reheare the denial of the extension, is that, that didn't, only that?
Oh, I mean, hear everything.
No, you can give them a new hearing on the issue.
So, uh, but based on the fact that we didn't technically vote.
Peter, I think we've gone beyond that at this point, to be honest with you, I think, to make it clean, I think we give Mr. Khalil the opportunity to come back before us, ask for a variance for the third apartment, with the plans accordingly, and, and be either granted or not.
Right, and, and be prepared to address all the criteria.
Correct, so you'd be prepared to do a full-blown hearing, so if you get, or whoever, but regardless, as long, but, okay.
Okay, I, I understand now, yes, I'm, I'm fine.
Just, just so that you're clear, you got approval for the special exception back in two thousand and seventeen, they asked you to go in front of the planning board, that's still a clause, or is, or is they gonna ask me to do that?
Exactly.
Okay.
But it's gonna be a variance now, it's, it's said especially, because the regulation has changed, okay? All right, so the motion should be to grant a rehearing on Mr. Khalil's application for a variance to allow a third apartment in his property located at nineteen, uh, page road.
So moved.
Right, good. Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Those say no? The ayes have it, so we'll see you next month, or when you get the application and the labels and the fees. Okay, it's Wednesday, it's the third Wednesday of every month by twelve noon, that's the deadline.
By noon?
Noon time on Wednesday.
Okay, we'll be here Tuesday. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have all of Tammy's cards, do you have a card?
I don't have one with me, but I'm right downstairs in the Sluggins office.
Okay.
When you come to reapply.
So when I come, okay, see.
You'll see Mrs. Air in there, okay, Air, Susan Air.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Pasco.
I'm getting a response, will it be possible to grant a special exception?
A continuance?
Continuance, okay.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll move it, we grant the continuance to, uh.
February.
February fourteenth.
Four, thank you.
It's the fourteenth, no, is it really?
It's the thirteenth.
Thirteenth, I think it's the thirteenth.
February thirteenth at seven, yeah.
Yeah, seven oh five, we'll have you as the first hearing that night, how's that sound, okay?
How about twenty nineteen?
Don't put that on, uh, could I have a motion to, uh, uh, grant Mr. Pasco a continuance to February in the second?
Second, yeah.
Discussion. All in favor, yep.
Aye.
You're all set, see you next month. All right, great, so we took you.
That was, that was really, really well handled after that very first hearing, I appreciate that, the way you approached that.
Thank you, I mean.
I, I, I thought that was a can of worms, it was getting opened up, but I think, I'm reading from Peter Lawson's letter, and I wrote a book on it, it was perfect, and, uh, you know, keep it simple, it did.
I probably worked harder on that hearing, on, on, I can't believe it, given, it's been going on since last February.
I know, and if, if, if they'd asked for a variance, they'd have, been.
Whoa, whoa.
She almost, she almost blew the whole thing up.
The worst part of it is, uh, for us, I mean, we told them.
Uh, Ellie, actually, uh, this, this is relevant, actually.
Oh, okay.
Maybe, maybe, no, before, before we adjourn.
Wait, wait, wait.
Uh, this comes.
Okay, well, hold on, guys.
Well, actually, uh, we go ahead and adjourn, this is just a general comment about, um, constructive training for, before we meet next time, but.
Okay.
So go ahead and.
All right, meeting is adjourned at, uh, eight twenty-two, Adam.